Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 12th Planning Board meeting. This is an additional meeting. If we could first, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So originally, I think we were going to be talking about the historic review tonight, but our consultant, I think, just came back with the report, and we have not had an opportunity to really dig into it. So tonight, we are going to continue with traffic and go into the environmental end. I do want to just take a minute and, I don't know, spell out a few things. Again, I said it at the last meeting, I know there might be some concerns from the public that they're not getting to speak prior to the public hearing when it is the appropriate time to speak. There is a lot of concern about the project as we dig into this and get into the details. However, we get every day, Robyn and John are getting emails, letters of concern. So people are getting to us. It might not be at the microphone, but it is through the pen or through the computer. So we do get those, and I said it again last, the last meeting on Monday, we look at every single one of them. We just got received a handwritten one, uh, one handed to us tonight. So all those are looked at, they are taken into consideration, they are reviewed, and the public will have their turn to speak at the public hearing. I also have heard, we have consultants that the town has hired to do work for the planning board, which is the lead agency. I've heard that there are people kind of going directly to these consultants, and that is not appropriate. They should be coming directly to us.
Correct.
So we, we hope that practice stops, and that if there are questions, they come directly to us. These are consultants that are paid for, and we don't need people from the general public at this point reaching out to them directly. So I hope that, that will stop.
Would the, I'd like to ask the board if they would like us to prepare a memo to go to our consultants, so that they are fully aware that all inquiries, comments, requests for any data comes through the lead agency and not in an ad hoc fashion to them, so that they are...
That would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. That being said, we only have one item on the agenda tonight. Underhill, so, counselor?
Well, thank you. Thank you. We thank the board for having this special meeting for us, and for accommodating us and allowing us to present to you again this evening. One of the things we'd like to do tonight is, where possible, is try to put a bow or some finality to some of the issues that have been discussed. For example, I wanted to talk, sort of pick up where we left off and talk about the financing component to the intersection, right? I think there was a little bit of confusion on Monday night as to the finality, from our perspective, of what we are offering. Initially, the project came forward with a mitigation measure that was around a cost of about $180,000. Through comments with this board, through this healthy discussion back and forth, through public comments, through your consultant reports, that proposal has evolved into what we were referring to on Monday as the option two, right? With the, the, not just, as you said it, Mr. Chairman, throwing tech at an intersection, but we're talking about a construction project where the applicant's going to be responsible for moving that existing wall, widening the road, the, we're instituting the turn lanes, the pedestrian striping, all of those components are now, is what we are putting forward as the mitigation measure for the potential adverse traffic impacts. That's, that's part of that project. The other question was raised, I think rightfully so, it's a fair question, was raised from the consultant, as to how do you guarantee that this, these expensive, if you will, improvements at that intersection don't get passed to the town if the developer runs out of money? We are also coming forward with the proposal of how to finance that full improvement. The financing is going to be, some monies put up by the developer as part of the secret mitigation, and then the rest of that money is also being fronted, if you will, financed by the developer, and a portion of that will be then through an agreement with Westchester County IDA, a tax abatement agreement. We've had meetings with the town, we've had meetings with the school board. A portion of that cost of improvement will then be reimbursed back to the developer through a partial tax abatement on the commercial side of the project, not the residential. So as soon as the improvements are online, as soon as the people are moving in, the assessment occurs, the town starts to begin to receive positive tax revenue from this project. That revenue, part of it is diverted back to help fund back for the, for the intersection, and then within, we're thinking it might be a three-year projection, perhaps a five-year projection, for a full reimbursement. It's going to be, unlike normal tax abatement agreements that will have maybe a 10, or 15, or 20-year finite period, we are going to cease the abatement as soon as that portion of the improvements are reimbursed. So the town is not going out of pocket at all for this intersection improvement that actually, as was mentioned on Monday, opens the door for future development. I think this was discussed a couple of times, but it's a very important point I want to re-raise, and you, you, Mr. Chairman, brought it up very directly to your consultant, Scott. Does this, do the improvements encompass and mitigate our, our potential impacts? Yes, it does. And then you asked the follow-up question, what about the future identified proposed projects that are in the pipeline, that this overlay zone is doing exactly what it was intended to do? This overlay zone is bringing forth additional projects. And when you asked that question, he said, yes, it includes that information, those identified projects too. So we just think it's, it's, it's an incredible solution to an existing problem, right? The intersection is, is not great. We have come forward now, this is our plan, right? That intersection, it's not a proposal, that's part of the plan, and how it's going to get funded is also coming forward. It's part of the plan. I don't want to speak for the town board, but we have had a positive reception from them. We believe, we need their cooperation for the IDA application. We believe that they are on board. We've had meetings with the school board. We're not seeing any resistance from the school board as it relates to our abatement. So we want to present to you tonight with finality, the intersection project, and also the how it's getting funded. One thing I forgot to, I'm remiss by not saying, what's added from the developer is also now picking up the design, the design of that site. We're not going to DOT and say, you know, send us your plans. We are going to be responsible for funding the design of, of the improvements. So we are undertaking design, we are undertaking funding, and we are undertaking a project that's going to not only address our impact, mitigate our impact, but also allow for that corridor to be subject to future development.
Do you want to say something?
Absolutely. That's it. It's, it's, it's basically $600,000 to $700,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's going to be somewhere between $600,000 to $700,000 that I would have to put up front, okay? And then the rest is going to be financed, but there's tax abatements that will come back to me in time, okay? So, you know, it, but not, there will be no, nothing other than the town is going to, they're going to be the permitee, right?
Correct.
That's right. Because of the way DOT works. But other than that, there will be no other cost to the town on this.
And I, I want also to make it clear, when we ask certain questions, it also reflects things that we've gotten, be it email or questions from the public. For instance, I directly asked our consultant if this was a failed design, right? And he said absolutely not, or not, it is not. And I know from the beginning, we've had some very clear areas of concern about the project. Mine, number one, was traffic. And again, the town board has created this overlay district because they want to see this type of development. This intersection is not a good intersection. We know that. This plan that's been designed and backed up by our consultant with some tweaking, we heard will benefit not just this development, but the entirety of the area. And that's what's very important. We want to really start to dig in to the, the details on these things, so that when people come at us with questions, we can answer them. I know tonight, we're here to talk a lot about environmental too after the traffic. That's also been another area of concern out there. Our consultant is here. So we are, some of the questions we ask are directly out of emails or questions that have come to us.
Yep. I, I think the questions that were asked on Monday were helpful in, in supplementing the written record as the board works its way toward approval. So I was just, all I wanted to do was discuss the, to just clarify how the financing is going to work, and I'll turn it over to, to Phil to talk about specifically, like you're talking about, specific details relating to the design.
So just a, just a quick question, I'm sorry. So I'm over here.
Yeah.
Everybody's looking all over the place. So, so as the town board understands it, and we have had some discussions, we are proceeding slowly and trying to understand the full impact, and...
Yes.
And I personally, speaking for myself, appreciate that you will be fronting the costs, I know that, you know, to get this intersection repaired. But just to be clear to the public, that once the abatement starts, it's not going to be, and I think you mentioned it already, but I just want to be perfectly clear, the abatement is only going to be on the commercial portion...
Correct.
...of the property.
Correct.
So the town will begin to collect tax revenue, and the school, on the residential portion, which will not be touched by the abatement. It will be solely on the commercial side. I just want to make sure the public understands that.
That's absolutely correct. And just to further that point, the, the ownership portion, the residential portion, is not eligible for an IDA benefit. So that's not even something that we would change later. That's by statute. So it's only the commercial portion. So the town is going to be seeing a beneficial tax revenue as soon as the project comes online, and then that, that tax revenue will just only increase...
Correct.
Only increase once, once the abatement is reimbursed. Yes, that's correct. Thank you for that clarification.
I had a question. I'm going to yield that by Tom. Regarding the abatement, we've had some communication from the public questioning whether that should be an appropriate way to fund the improvements or part of the improvements there. And I think that ties into the question of, how do we know that those funds are going to be there when the project starts? So I think...
Sure.
I think it's fairly safe to assume that if the, if the abatement program or the, the agreement is put in place, it's going to be there when, when construction starts. Otherwise, we've got bigger problems than, than that.
Well, both of us do.
Right. So, so that's the portion of it that the applicant is not going to be funding directly. He's going to be advancing the money, but not funding it per se. And the portion that he's going to be funding it is the, is the other side of the question is how do we know they're going to make the improvements? And I think it's pretty easy to do that one of two ways, either to tie the issuance of CFOs or something like that...
Correct.
Prior to that work being completed is not going to happen, or we're going to do it on the 10th COO, or whatever the number we come to, or it gets bonded.
Well, I think you're...
Those are ways to, to secure...
Exactly.
...that event happening.
Well, you stole my thunder a little bit. I mean, we wanted to bring up the, that's exactly how you would do it. So it all goes through the mechanism that you, that we would be, or the board would employ, would be the site plan approval conditions.
Right.
And within those conditions, you tie, tying it to the COO is a common and very effective approval condition that's used all the time.
Right.
And, but the thing is that the applicant, I think, for a point of clarification, the applicant is funding the entirety, not a portion, right?
I understand, I understand.
Okay, okay.
I'm saying, but his responsibility, as he stated it, is for that set amount, and the other part, he's going to be reimbursed.
Yes, correct, yes.
So I'm just trying to make that distinction, because some people are saying, well, why should he receive an abatement? Because he's advancing the money.
Correct.
He's benefiting the town beyond what his impact is.
That's our position, right?
That's the reason that I look favorably upon that concept.
Yes.
But to guarantee the funds are going to be there, an abatement program is pretty much a guarantee that it's going to be there.
Absolutely. And there are benchmarks along the way that are all subject to the public, they're all public documents. For example, the IDA is, is similar to a, a planning board, public meetings, notice, subject to open meetings law, all that, you know, so all, it's...
There's no mystery.
No, 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 it's a very transparent process.
Right. Okay. I wanted to get that out of the way before we got into the...
That's excellent.
Because that seems to be the, the over, that's the umbrella over this whole thing is how it's going to happen.
Exactly.
The details of it are yet to be, nobody knows those details as we sit here, I think, because there's still a lot to discuss.
Right. And even the IDA, just like this board, the IDA will have its own conditions...
Right.
You know, its own timelines and its own benchmark. And the IDA now has very strict clawback provisions if you're not doing what you say you're going to do. So there's a lot that goes into this that isn't just conceptual. There are real benchmarks, real obligations, statutory obligations that we have to adhere to.
Well, I think, I think this board, as, as I understand it, is very concerned about having that intersection improved and making sure that it happens. So just want to cover the base that, as to how it's going to happen, because the details of what it's going to be, at this point, we're going to discuss those, but the overriding umbrella of how this gets funded and when it gets funded and what the milestones are are important to us to understand, I think.
Right. And look, at the end of the day, that improved intersection helps our project too.
Right, exactly.
It's not just about mitigation.
No, no, I understand.
So, yeah, I mean, that's why we're advancing this somewhat creative and costly solution.
Okay.
Before we get to Phil, just refresh my memory, the, the total cost of the road improvements are, are what number?
Approximately $900,000.
And of?
With just one, one clarification on it. So part of your consultant's concern was, before we had this discussion that Mark just presented to you, was to have a higher contingency number. So with his contingency number of 20% instead of 10%, that brought his number to $1 million, okay? So we're guaranteeing it. So the contingency is almost a moot point at this, at this point. And, and I think when Scott was making that comment the other night, he wasn't aware of the details that Mark had just laid out, okay? So our estimate is $900,000 in round numbers, okay? Eight, eight eighty-seven, or whatever it was. Mr. Galero is already paying for the design. So if you remember, when your first, your consultant first looked at it, he says, well, you know, what about design? And he's already covering that. He wasn't, he's not getting any credit technically in that listing. So that's over $100,000 for the design. And the, the cost, the construction cost that we've estimated, including contingencies, our contingencies, is $900,000.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, his out-of-pocket is actually more than that, because he's paying for the design, he's paying for the wall reconstruction as part of his site work. So that isn't part of that $900,000. And he's also administrating the, the contract. So during construction, items come up where there may be a question, a technical question from the contractor. He's covering all that as part of that, that $900,000 listing, okay? So that's the answer to the question.
So out of the 900...
Yep.
How much of that are you looking to recoup through the tax abatement?
Well, it's, it's really the differential. The, the 450, so the soft cost I'm talking about, the $100,000 that's coming out of his pocket, that's not in the 900,000, okay? The 900,000 is the construction-related cost.
Good. Now, how much of that are you think, are you proposing to recoup?
So he is proposing 450, so it would be 450 that's being recouped. However, up to this point in time, I think, you know, in-house, we know that he was doing these expenses. The $100,000 for the design cost, the $100,000 for the wall reconstruction relocation, he's doing that as a, a project cost. So there's no reimbursement on either of those items. You following me?
Yeah.
So it's really, so when you start looking at the 450, he's spending 450, plus another 100, plus another 100, plus he's giving up a piece of land that has some value. So if, if you ask me, what is he really putting into that he's not getting reimbursed? It's, it's probably close to 700,000 by the time it's all said and done.
But, but my question is...
But the simple answer to your question...
What's the reimbursement?
Is out of, out of 900,000...
Yeah.
The 450, there's 450 that's being reimbursed over time, but it's coming out of his pocket upfront.
I understand that, but the, the proposed tax abatement...
450. In round numbers, 450.
Is going to come up to 450, and then the other expenses are direct mitigation of this project. Is that, is that our understanding?
Whether you classify, yes. The 450 and his other out-of-pocket costs.
Okay. Thank you.
But, and we would say, though, the, the additional, the cost of money to finance the improvement until such time that the reimbursement comes back, and all of this really, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, all of, all of those costs we are considering and presenting as mitigation.
And mitigation is not money that you expect to get back through a tax abatement?
Some of it is, some of it is, because that money is being fronted, and that, that, that costs the developer money to front that and finance that portion of the project. So when it, when it, when it's coming back as reimbursable, a portion of the full project cost, we are proposing is reimbursed to us through the tax abatement. But that whole process of fronting and financing this improvement that extends far beyond our impact, is, that's all eligible to be considered by this board to be mitigation. Yeah.
I think it's easier to...
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Anna.
The fiscal imp, the fiscal cost of advancing funds for impacts that are not directly attributable to this project is what you're seeking in addition to the actual out, you know, the money demand.
Correct, yes.
So the cost of getting that money in. I, I just wanted to get an idea of how much you're basically assigning to the direct mitigation of your work, which is not something you're looking to get back in the abatement.
Oh, that's correct, yes.
And whatever's left over and above that, you're going to get back so that we can get the intersection improvement, but you'll recover it because it's not a direct consequence of your project.
I understand, yes, correct.
And that's that 450 number.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And part of the, you can't build half a lane, you can't build half an intersection. That, that's, that's why this is getting done.
I wanted to clarify where the numbers were and what, what was going on with that. And I, and I understand there's a component for interest and the financing and that sort of thing.
And if your contingency escalates...
Mm-hmm.
You continue with the project, pay the full cost...
Yep.
And that...
Correct.
...additional money comes out on the back end in the abatement.
Correct. Under that scenario, the amount that we're seeking the, for the abatement would increase commensurate with the, with the overrun. Yep.
I think it's easier to explain to the public, because, I mean, I'm following this, and it's very clear to me, but it's easier to explain to the public the entire number as opposed to the additional two, and then the 450, and then the 900. So we're looking at this project in terms of probably, possibly maybe 1.1 to 1.2 million in total. And Mr. Galero is going to put 450 plus the 100 for the design, give or take, plus the 100 for the wall.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So that, so we're looking at 650. So if you take 1.1 and you minus the 650, and Mr. Galero's committed to, I think people are, would be more apt to understand that, and that would be the number that we would, you would guys be seeking as a tax abatement. And I think if you just deal with, you know, one whole number minus one whole, you know, whatever you guys are, are going to be putting in, people could understand that more clearly.
All right. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is go through some of the comments that were, I'll say, kind of open from the other night. Joe has it up on the screen, but I have some hard copies that may be easier for the board to follow. Steve, can you just pass it over? So the way we had laid these out were onsite items, offsite items, funding and implementation, which is kind of the last item on here, which I think we've, we've already discussed that. So in, in terms of the ons, we'll jump right into the onsite item if, if that's okay with So the, the first item on the list, which, Joe, can you bring up that plan? First item on the list was a question that was raised relative to the proximity of the intersection from Underhill, the first intersection. So the original plan was used in the exact alignment of the driveway as it comes in and loops around the building. So what this plan is what we've proposed, and it's reflected on the revised plan, is to tee up the intersection, so anybody leaving, coming from the east-west road, I'll call it, in a westerly direction, would be stop sign controlled, and the distance from that out to Underhill Avenue is over 100 feet. So we can easily stack five or more vehicles there. So right now, the driveway that's there is really kind of a one-way driveway circulation around the mansion building, and this would tee it up, give us that control so that there's no, the inbound traffic coming from Underhill Avenue, which is at the bottom of your screen, any inbound traffic is given the right-of-way coming in. They either come in and make a right turn and go around the loop to the right, or they can go straight across. Anybody leaving, coming from the westbound leg, would be stop controlled, just like any other intersection that's controlled by a stop sign. So we have the separation distance from Underhill Avenue, it's controlled, it's a standard treatment. We remove some of the parking spaces just so that people, you know, aren't backing out of a space where someone's coming in. So we relocated and eliminated those three parking spaces that were on the driveway as you come in, and we also eliminated two spaces in order to be able to tee up the intersection at that point right there. Those spaces have been relocated to other parts of, of the site. So that was one item that was brought up, and we wanted to just, you know, have the board understand of how we address that and how the traffic would be controlled at that point. The next item on the issue really was related to that, is the removal of those parking spaces in proximity to that intersection. That has been done. We'll get into this a little bit later on when Joe pulls up his revised site plan, but we have provided a separate loading area along the north-south roadway over near the apartment building. There's an area where we've created a area for a loading, a separate loading area outside of the travelway. Pedestrian connections throughout the site have been updated and clarified. The sidewalk system connects now with the future senior center. There will be a sidewalk in front of the senior center that connects directly to the sidewalk system that's in Beaver Ridge. So that connection occurs roughly where the existing dumpsters are on Beaver Ridge. Those would be shifted further to the east so that the pedestrian path would, would be able to connect to the existing sidewalk system in Beaver Ridge. And that would provide a full pedestrian connection between the two sites, pedestrian connection to the senior center, and when we get into the site plan that Joe will pull up, you'll see all the, the sidewalks throughout the, the site to accommodate that. The current site plan, the parking on the site plan is code compliant, meaning that the required spaces for each use on that site are provided on the plan. So we have...
You have a question on that?
Yes.
Not to cut into your, your explanation. You got another email tonight or letter?
In your opinion, you've been doing, you're, you have your doctorate in civil engineering, this is what you do, traffic.
Yes.
You've done a lot of projects in town. You did the Costco or the Lowe's, excuse me, that whole project, the traffic, the parking there. Parking is changing, right?
Yes.
The way parking is being looked at from a planning perspective has changed. Do you think with the amount of units on this property that are proposed, and with the way people are dealing with cars these days, that this is an appropriate number of parking spaces?
Yes. So there are a couple of things. Number one is the town code is, in terms of parking requirements for residential units, is pretty consistent with industry standards, which is important. They keep getting updated over time, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ULI, they are right in line with what's proposed here.
At, at one and a half?
At one and a half spaces per dwelling unit, okay? And, you know, not to get sidetracked, but the data also shows that if there are some senior units, and, and again, we're not proposing that the code be adjusted, we're providing the one and a half. With senior units, they typically come, that comes down a little bit. Typically 15%. If they're income restricted, then that's a whole different gamut, but typically, you, there is a slight reduction when you have senior units. But the one and a half spaces per dwelling unit is standard, okay? The other...
The other thing that this plan, which is, we do this quite often, we are providing some land bank spaces also. So if things change over time, and the board and the town has control, if we needed to provide, you know, additional spaces, I forget the exact number, but we have about 20 land bank spaces, which we don't want to build because it's more impervious, but if it was ever needed, it could be added, okay? So I believe based on my review of this plan, it's consistent. Now, that's without taking any real credit for shared parking, we have some office space here. So during the day, typically, you look at distributions of residential, people will leave, and in most planned multi-use developments, you would get like a credit for shared parking where there's an overlap. So if I leave to go to work, my space is open, the person that comes in to work in the office, he parks in my space. We haven't even gotten into that in any kind of credits. So when I say code compliant, we're providing for every unit and for every square footage of office space, a space, okay? There was a question the other night, which I'll jump into, about the shared parking for the senior center. So the senior center is about 4,000 square feet total, I think 2,000 is allocated to parks and wrecks, and 2,000 for the senior center. So the surface parking, okay, on the site, some of that is related to the apartment building. There's some that's within the structure or below the structure, that would be only for the apartment dwellers, okay? Exterior parking during the day has that ability for shared use. And that's where the senior center would come into play of benefiting from using some of those same spaces. Now again, we also have the land bank spaces that wouldn't be built up front, but if we needed more spaces, they could be added. So my opinion on this is, the plan is code compliant. We haven't taken any credit for the mixed uses on the site for shared parking. There would be some shared parking for the senior center when that gets built, but it's adequate based on, you know, current standards.
So that means that you've, in an additive fashion, you've taken the apartment demand at one and a half per unit, and you've taken the commercial at four per thousand, and added that together and provided that onsite. In addition to that, you have some land banking possibilities.
That's correct.
Right, so I think the question that the chairman has brought up is relative to taking a hard look at the parking in terms of times of disparate use and the different uses on the site, and determining whether or not, while it's adequate under the code numbers, whether it's providing more than is, will be typically needed. Because I think that, given the characteristics of the site and some of the issues that surround the development, that it should be looked at with a particular focus to make sure that we're doing the very best that we can to not have additional parking that's extraneous and unneeded, which will help certain aspects of some of the concerns that surround the site development, so.
And I think we've been consistent to...
I mean, for example, John, the simple way to do that would be, do you want to put more land bank parking? And then you analyze it right after it's built, you know? I mean, we can do all sorts of projections and calculations, and there's, you know, percentages over the course of the day. I think there's not, you know, in a bigger development, if there was more commercial, more office or retail, then, you know, getting into that becomes very significant because you can be talking about a lot of spaces. We're not talking about that much commercial space on this site.
Right.
And I think, you know, being code compliant is a good point to start with.
It's a good starting point, of course.
And if some of it could be land bank, fine, but additional land bank.
Right, and I'm not talking about a lot of spaces either, but I think some, some look at some of the spaces that may be able to be not built or eliminated altogether, I think would help some of the other aspects that we've been grappling with. And it wouldn't be, I'm not talking about, you know, 50 spaces.
Yeah, maybe 10 spaces or something like that.
You know, in particular areas, five here, 10 here, something like that, I think would go a long way in terms of the design and layout of the site, responding to some of the things that are pertinent here in this development proposal.
Okay.
So would you like to talk about parking now, because Joe can jump in on that, or do you want to come back to it later?
Well, why don't we do it once we pull the plan up? So maybe if we could just kind of run through these items, and then we'll get into the plan and get into the nuts and bolts. So again, we talked already about the senior center and some of that breakdown. The next item really was, let's, we'll jump back quickly to the offsite improvements. So the offsite improvements, just, and Joe, if you could just pull up that plan for a second, the the future plan, it's called, yeah. So just for clarification here, so the intersection reconstruction calls for pedestrian crossings on all four corners, pedestrian signals on all four corners, updated signal equipment, including video detection. On Underhill Avenue, there would be left-turn lanes on each approach, both in front of Town Hall here and along the property frontage. There were concerns raised about traffic backing up as it does today past Cardinal Court. We have signing, and we've incorporated the do-not-block-the-box striping as part of that. I think your consultant commented on that the other night also. So that is really the trucks of the whole intersection improvement in terms of traffic operations improvement. So it's the signal upgrades, it's the widening, the turn lanes, the sidewalk connections, pedestrian crossings of all four quadrants there. So in terms of that, that's what's, you know, the construction, funding, and the design is all focused on. In terms of the other offsite, there's some other offsite improvements, there's some site distance improvements and other related items at the driveways, and those are all being taken care of by the applicant, there's no cost to any of the town on any of those items. In terms of, Mark had already gone through the funding mechanism and that whole reimbursement, so I think that was really the items that I wanted to cover. There was a comment about traffic on Glen Rock Street, I believe your consultant has weighed in on it. You know, we addressed it here, but I believe your consultant has provided, it's not a significant cut-through area. We had analyzed that, traffic volumes, as part of our study of what is there today, and we agree with the conclusions that your consultant had in his most recent memo.
And again, that was a question that came from the residents.
Yeah, that was a resident question, and it was brought up at the meeting the other night. So I think those were really kind of the big picture items that I wanted to cover. The rest really gets into the site plan. So, and Joe, if you want to pull up the plan, and we can jump right into some of the parking items, show where the loading area is that's now provided.
Can I ask a question? I just, with the widening of the road and everything, will that bring the entire intersection into alignment? Because the two halves of Underhill are just...
Yeah, so part of the reason for some of the wall reconstruction and the land that's being dedicated to do this improvement, which, you know, again, that's land that the applicant is providing, so there is quote "a dollar" associated with that, but it's to get the alignment to do with the offset that exists today, and so that the left turns can run concurrently, and to ease the alignment that is problematic out there today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's related to the parking, if that's okay?
Of course.
So I think, John, maybe before we get into the areas of where you're talking about parking, is, Joe, the modifications that were made relative to the pedestrian connections, you maybe want to just start at the main entrance and go through those?
So this is, the site plan is a little different. A little bit different than what we've been looking at previously, so, you know, it's a work in progress. The most significant change on the site plan is, based on discussions with John Taggert, kept voicing concerns about the size of the apartment building. So we have reduced the size of the apartment building significantly. We've shortened this leg, as well as this leg of the building, as well as pull the building in in this location here. So as a contrast, I'll bring up the previous plan.
Pick out special colors.
So this is the previous rendition that we have been looking at all along. We basically pulled everything back on this end, about 20 feet, about the same, maybe a little more on this end. So you could see the proximity between the two, the existing building and this leg of the apartment building. And here's where we are now. So we've opened this up quite a bit, created some more separation in here. We're paying attention, more attention to the tunnel system that goes under the existing, the existing home now, residents now, or whatever, the existing building, whatever you want to call it. And so we're making sure that that's accessible, we're putting a retaining wall in. Graphically, it works right now, but we've got to do a little more engineering on it, but that opens up this area and allows access and continued use of those tunnels if we were wanting to use them for any reason. But anyway, so with that said, we've modified the walking system throughout the site, the pedestrian access. Originally, as you came up the stairwell from the corner, we had this little plaza area. You came up the stairwell, you would come across the site and get to the pond area with a sidewalk that was previously here. We're now taking everything to this side of the access drive, and we've got a little landing area that mimics the plaza area, that's going to be at the intersection. And all access points will come from that, from this little plaza landing area here. So you would go to the west side of the site along this way, or if you want to go to the Underhill House, again, you would go along this way. And this brings you across here to the pathway that goes around the pond. You can continue around the front of the building, all across the commercial space. This connects through, keeps connecting through, and it takes you all the way into Beaver Ridge to this point here.
And Joe, right across from that point where you just ended there, the existing sidewalk on Beaver Ridge is directly across from...
Right here.
Right there, that picks up right there, so you have a continuous connection.
So with that, with the reduction in the size of the building, we also pulled this parking area further away from Selma River Road, that's going to potentially provide some more protection of existing trees that we were hoping to keep there, and I think we're going to be able to save a few more than we were expecting. We provided a little loading area here, again, that's out of the traffic lane, and, you know, if it needs to be bigger, we can expand it or whatnot, but this is the location that we chose. It's near the commercial space, it's near the apartment complex, it's near the senior center. So it's kind of centrally located to those uses there. This plan doesn't reflect what Phil had demonstrated before as far as changes to this intersection. That'll come at a later date, once that's confirmed on the final configuration of that. We've added a few more parking spaces along this edge here, which was possible because of the shortening of the building. As Phil had mentioned, if we needed some land bank parking spaces, they would be along this edge here. And we also have additional area here, need be. John asked for a widening of the path along the, around the pond, the eight feet, which we've accommodated there. And those are the major changes. We had one other suggestion that we wanted to present to you, and slight modification so that this cul-de-sac isn't just hanging out by itself out there. We would take these two end units here and move them up off the end and pull the cul-de-sac in.
That was an Ibaka recommendation.
Right. As far as the parking count goes, as Phil said, we are whole on the parking count, we meet the parking count requirements. The Underhill House is based on a thousand-square-foot restaurant. There was some discussion at the last meeting about possibly not being suitable or being too small a restaurant space. It's a thousand square feet that we're assuming. When you take out the prep space and non-patron space, it might be 800 square feet of restaurant. If the board was so inclined to make that a larger space, a space that might be more attractive to a restaurateur to go in there, it's going to require more parking spaces. Again, we have the ability to add spaces, or we have the possibility of varying based on the shared use. So we just want to throw that out there as a thought and to see what the board's reaction is to that.
In reference to that in particular, and we had a very nice tour of that absolutely beautiful building. I don't think there's any restaurateurs on the board here that I know, maybe. John might have dabbled in it a little bit. What I would suggest is, talk to a restaurateur. I think a restaurant and that building would be fantastic. I mean, it just, I went back home after that walk, and I was, took a few pictures, not many, but it was just absolutely beautiful. And that would be, you know, you think about Peter Pratt's in town, and some of these other, oh, we were talking about it earlier, some of these older historic buildings, Primavera is down the street, there's buildings that have been turned into restaurants. Very attractive. And I think when the board, again, did this overlay, those are the types of things they wanted to pull into the town. You know, you got a proposed hotel down the street, Baltic Hotel, with the rooftop bar and a café. This restaurant that's proposed, those are the types of things that attract people to the town. So I would talk to a restaurateur. I would love to say that some of us have expertise in that, but not so much. So I think that's, you know, but I think we'll listen to whatever comes to us. There was a question that came up about the house, and I guess there's some windows that have been boarded up. And it was a question that came in, I thought it was a legitimate question, so I don't know if you want to just talk about that real quick, the condition of the building.
When we were feeling more positive about the process, how it was moving, and we were going to actually take some of those windows out, and, you know, just see if we can get them remade. Because they're all problems. And we had somebody that was going to do it at a reasonable price. But then we just said, let's just wait.
Yep.
So we still might do it, but I'd like to know what it would cost to replace those windows. And that was the only reason to do it, is we start the process, I think we were going to take five of them and see how we'd make out, but, you know, we stopped that.
Okay, so was it, they were taken out to look?
No, we didn't take them out.
All right, but you were thinking about to restore, what it would take to restore them?
Actually, a few birds.
Yeah.
Actually, a few birds flew into the window, because their windows are so old and they're so thin. they're so thin. We found a dead bird, but came right through the window, flashed into the windows.
So, that question did come up, but I thought it was something that should be, because we were in the building. It's not like the building is falling apart or anything of the sort. It's in very, very good condition. Sorry, Joe.
That's it. I mean, again, the big change here was the reduction in the size of the building, and that opens this area up.
Joe, did that, did that reduction result in any revisions to the unit count?
It, it, it did not. It did not.
So, just the configuration of the architecture of the building itself?
Correct. It was just, um, creating a more efficient design-
Okay.
Efficient layout of the units.
I think the units did get smaller.
I, I have a question just as a clarification. The, the senior center that we're talking about, which is built off your site, what is the impact of parking from that building? What is the need for parking for that building? And how much of that need is being the shared parking that we're talking about on this site? In other words, is there, is there parking on the Beaver Ridge site that is addressing part of this, their impact? Or where are the total numbers? I mean, you addressed it verbally, but not in numbers that, to me, understand how much is being shared and why.
So, on Joe's plan, he actually has a note that there's about thirty spaces, I believe, Joe, that we, we have allocated as quote "shared spaces."
Okay.
That, but the reality is that the, the spaces aren't going to be marked for residents only or senior center only.
I understand that.
Beaver Ridge does not have any real surplus of parking. There's only a few spaces.
So, it's all coming onto the site?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Anyway, so I just wanted to point out, so, um, it's, it's almost sixty feet now from the, the furthest point of the Underhill House to the closest point of our apartment building. So, we gained about twenty, a little over twenty feet of additional space there.
Looks a lot, looks a lot better.
Yeah. And again, we've pulled this, we've also pulled this whole side and created a larger walkway in front of the commercial space, which this section of, of the walkway in front of the commercial space will have an overhang, will be covered. And that allowed us to pull a little further away from 118. This is still a work in progress as to how we're going to treat this whole area in here, but clearly, we're going to protect the existing walls that are here and allow the two openings to the tunnels to, to be accessible and to remain.
So, those existing walls will remain intact?
Yes. And that's about it on the, on the site plan. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
There's no question. I'm sorry, this is a work session, but we got your, your-
Okay. I'm here tonight to, to talk about wetlands as well as trees and the tree code. I did receive the comment letter from Johanna, and there was a couple of points there that we responded to. One was beginning with the wetland delineation itself. She, she and I went out in February and looked at the deline, the delineation in the field, agreed with it in part. There was a portion of Wetland B, Wetland C, that she felt should be expanded to include additional area as being town-regulated wetland, as well as a swell that runs from almost to the corner of Glen Rock and Underhill Avenue, down through the site and eventually into this water course that flows to the pond. So, we did add those two features to the wetland mapping.
I'll, I'll open that up for you.
And Joe's plans now reflect that. So, I believe that the wetland delineation we now show on the plans is, is accurate as, as far as the town is concerned. With that addition of wetland, we then therefore have addition of wetland fill. In my response to Johanna's letter, I did indicate that as we move forward, in a very near future, we will include discussion of the functions of the wetland on-site, which is always really critical to deciding what kind of disturbance is appropriate and what kind of mitigation is required. And we have updated the, uh, the wetland section of the EAF to have language regarding the function of, of those wetlands. In terms of the creation and how those wetlands formed in the first place, I think we're on the same page, that the work of that emergency access to Beaver Ridge created a, a berm dam condition so that water runoff coming down the hill hits that berm and now settles on the western side of the berm, as well as the ponded area, which we call Wetland B, is essentially a hole in the ground which filled with water after excavation for movement of material to form that access road. I did walk the site with the Conservation Board recently as well and was able to point out to them that, you know, many of those piles of fill that were left on-site as that work was being done still remain there and are still essentially unvegetated because it's, uh, we're talking about subsoils and low nutrient soils that really don't have the ability to support much in the way of vegetation. So, our analysis really does conclude then that the wetlands on the site are functioning to detain and retain water runoff coming down the hill, as well as conveying water from one portion of the site to the other. From habitat standpoints, from vegetative diversity standpoints, they're not really functioning very much. So, our mitigation plan really reflects that, and we'll get to that in a second. The other, the final point was Army Corps of Engineers involvement. We do intend at some point in the future to get in touch with the Army Corps of Engineers in terms of authorization of a nationwide permit for the activities that we're proposing. New York District currently isn't going out of their way to do jurisdictional determinations at this time because they're understaffed and just can't get out in the field. And they have asked us to, you know, kind of provide the information or accumulate the information we would need to, to back up our delineation at such a time as when we go in for the nationwide permit authorization, they'll have that information to confirm the wetland delineation as well as review the plan. Nationwide permit process, if, as, if you're probably familiar with it, allows for up to a half acre of fill in federal wetlands, provided there is a reasonable amount of, of wetland mitigation provided to offset that, particularly offset it from a functional standpoint. We will have to show what we're doing in terms of why we got to that point and why those wetlands are being filled in. My, my experience and my assessment of the site is that the two smaller wetlands on the site are unlikely to be regulated as, as federal wetlands because of a lack of direct connection to the whole federal wetlands, the wetland system, but that the water course that comes down from Glen Rock through the site, under our proposed road and eventually into the lake, will be regulated as a, as a water of the US, as they call it, and therefore under federal jurisdiction. Joe, if you could bring up, I think I just call it wetland mitigation on that.
This one or this one? This is compiled, this one's compiled?
Compiled is the, that's the tree plan.
This is mitigation plan.
That would be, yeah, that would be it. So, our proposal therefore is to do some excavation in the upland area, west of the pond. As you can see, the water course comes down through the, through, under the road up there, through the center of what we're calling our new wetland. There's a berm directly west of the pond that has been essentially used as a, a walking path for many years. We propose to take that out. Essentially, we're trying to connect that upland woodland area more closely with the pond in terms of wetlands and wetland function. So, we're going to be removing material closest to the pond to get down to a level about a foot above the pond elevation, and then begin the process of replanting with wetland vegetation, trees, shrubs, and herbaceous materials. As we go up the hill, we will be creating, pulling back some of that material to create shallower depressional areas, which will also hold water as the water moves down that hill outside of the, the water course channel itself, because if you've been out there, you know that regardless of whether it's regulated as wetland, seasonally, there are wet spots up in that area. So, we hope to tap into that as the water comes down the hill and, and capture it in order to support the wetland vegetation and eventually provide the, the wetland soils that would, that would be in that area as a functional wetland. So, that's our concept. I have, obviously, on the plan, I have notes. I have a full discussion of, of the mitigation and how we're doing it and how, it's about fourteen thousand square feet, so we'll be at about two to one in terms of the entire wetland disturbance on the site. And so, that will be coming to the town in the very near future as we update the EAF and get everything buttoned up for a final distribution and review. So, that's where we are with the wetlands.
What, what work are you doing to the pond itself?
No, no work to the pond itself.
Well, right.
Unless Mr. Galahad has some ideas that-
No, no, we'll be dredging the pond. I mean, there's, it's probably at four feet now, so, and it, it needs to get down to about eight feet. Okay? So, that's what we're going to be doing.
Should we hear from him? Yep. Even better.
Yes.
Suddenly, the focus is on you. There you are.
I'm Lee Jones with Barton and Legudis. I'm not Johanna, but I, I have been to the site, Johanna and I walked it together. Obviously, a lot of the items that we still need to see are the items you just listed in terms, because obviously, we haven't seen this mitigation plan yet. I, again, to truly evaluate it, we're going to need to understand what you were already saying of undertaking the function and value of the wetlands on-site regardless of how they were created, to then understand what mitigation measures will be accepted or not. So, I think we're just still waiting on those items to review. Obviously, I know that you've updated it as per your site visit with Johanna, so, again, I don't have any necessarily questions or anything without understanding and that evaluation, and then obviously, reaching out to the Army Corps too to see if there's anything will be federally, a federal jurisdiction on any of the wetlands. And I don't know if there's anything specific that you want me to address, or-
I got one question. So, we keep hearing about the wetlands and the wetlands were created, and we understand that. What is their value? What, what is the quality of these wetlands? I mean, is it, are there vernal pools? Are there, and again, I'm going off some of the questions we've got. What is their value?
And we, I mean, that's, again, we're reviewing that information, so we're not providing that assessment of those wetlands, and that's what we're waiting to see still from them to do that evaluation of them, so that we, and then we'll review that evaluation to see if we agree with it and if they've covered, you know, done that investigation.
Well, there's, there's a methodology we use in terms of wetland assessment, and I will be, I'll be providing that as part of the revised wetland section for the EAF. We've already, I've already drafted that up. Again, judging from just what's going on in the field out there, the wetlands are functioning for wet water detention and retention during storm events and conveyance of water. In my, again, in my, in my assessment, there isn't a lot going on in terms of, in terms of vegetative diversity, in terms of wildlife habitat. Groundwater recharge is a, is a function that we look at, and that's not going on out there. So, most of the functions we look at in terms of determining how high of, what level function, what kind of benefits a wetland is providing, aren't being provided in this wetland system. But I, I'll document all that, you know, based on a, a, a recognized assessment method, and this way, we'll have something to, to review and to comment again on.
So, without that assessment yet, what is this mitigation plan based on in terms of the square footage? Is it just square footage of wetland that you are filling? Or how is, how did you sort of come up with this plan and the square footage that you're using?
Yeah, square footage of wetland that we're filling, but also topographically, when you look at the site from a landscape, this is where the mitigation wants to be.
Right.
Once you get out there, you can see that that's the spot where if you were going to do mitigation, if you were going to cut some trees, particularly non-native trees, do a little bit of minor excavation to get some kind of groundwater discharge and, and hydrate your new wetland, this is the place to do it. So, the size of the wetland actually just talked to me and said, this is where I want to be and this is how big I want to be.
So, you haven't determined the actual final size of what it needs to be? Because I, I mean, I've been to the site and I know the exact site you're talking about, so it makes sense to me, that location.
Well, again, but in terms of this being our mitigation area, it's based on the size of what we're impacting and coming up with approximately a two to one replacement for that wetland.
Square footage base, okay.
And again, I think this is more of a candid discussion, just like we asked Dr. Greeley about the parking and the way things are changing. Obviously, you've got people in the audience, there's a lot of people probably watching. You know, you've been doing this a long time. What are we dealing with, Doctor? What you, what you've proposed here, is this true wetland? Is this ten times better than what's out there now? Is what out there, because I know there was one culvert that was blocked. I think that's been, there's been some maintenance done on there to let it flow. You know, I have a wetland in my backyard. It's a wetland. We went on a site a few weeks back on a field trip. It is a real wetland. I, I'm, I'm trying to grapple with, you know, the value of this thing. And is what's up there enough? Is it three times of what's out there in value? What is the value? You know, we could talk about the value of an intersection and the benefit of doing that, or adding parking spots, or the, the wrap around the pond. I, this is one area, and I served on the Conservation Board for many years. What, what is the value? What do you, what do, you've been doing this. You know, you've been out there. What is your opinion of what's out there?
Well, my opinion, and I'm hoping it'll be bared out by the town's consultant as well, is that there are, that the wetlands that are out there are very limited in function other than, like I say, conveying, like, the water course that comes down from Glen Rock flows down through the woods in an eroded channel. A lot of that erosion ended up on the upstream side, side of that culvert, which we were talking about, that goes under the emergency access, which has now been cleared out just to try to, and it was clearly, they dug down about a foot, found the culvert, and the water just whooshed right out. So, a lot of that erosion that formed that channel ended up in that spot, filled in the stream channel. Water comes over the top of the access road. As, as you know, when we were out there, the access road is no longer passable as an access road because it's too wet. So, a lot of how that whole area formed was a result of the erosion coming down the hill and blocking that culvert and causing water to come over the street. So, again, from a, a wetland function standpoint, there's not a lot going on other than it's moving water or holding water.
So, talk, talk about this. So, you said the plants out there, right? This, what are the-
Plants, well, the plants, both in the wetland, in that stream corridor coming down, and in those two small pockets that we have, are limited in terms of even being native, natural, well-developed wetland vegetation community. There are very few species out there. Most of that area remains uncovered with vegetation. It's still bare soil all these years later, because when they stripped off that top soil, moved the top soil wherever they moved it, used some of that subsoil to create that access way, all they left was bare, low nutrient soil underneath that really doesn't, isn't fertile. It's not something that plants grow in substantially anyway. So, that's, that's what, in terms of habitat, which is one of the things you really want to look at for wetlands, the only possible habitat that those two little pockets could have would be in terms of vernal pool amphibian breeding areas. Vernal pools, probably heard this before, a vernal pool is an area that gets wet in the wintertime, generally November to December, when the trees lose their leaves, more water is left in the ground because the trees aren't pumping it out. The pools fill up with water. Come March, late March, early April, wood frogs, various salamander species come to that pool, lay their eggs. Lay, the eggs become tadpoles or they become larvae. Once the pools dry out, because once the trees break leaf mid-April to late April, they suck a lot of water out of the ground. Those pools tend to dry out, so they're dry in the summer, wet in the winter. That's the time when those creatures are just large enough that they can crawl off back into the woods and do their woods thing until the next year, when the pools fill up again.
So, do you have vernal pools out there?
We don't, we have vernal, we have areas that have vernal pool hydrology, but in the three years I've been going out to the site, I've never seen a wood frog in that pool. I've never seen any salamander eggs in those pools. So, the potential is there, but the, it's not actually functioning as a vernal pool in that sense.
So, when you go to determine a wetland, what, what are the items that you look at to determine the wetland?
There's a number of things. There's wildlife, habitat, and diversity. There's vegetative diversity.
I'm going to stop at each one. So, there's wildlife.
And I am going to write all this up.
All right.
You'll see this as well, so.
It's just, this is a conversation. So, wildlife is one of the characteristics. Is there any wildlife out there?
There isn't wildlife, there's wildlife on the site, there's the general suburban deer and squirrels and raccoons and that kind of thing.
Right, but in the wetland area, something that you would determine?
I found nothing in, I found nothing over, over this time I've been going out there. I found nothing that's what you consider to be a wetland-dependent species. In other words, if the wetland wasn't there, you know- In other words, if the wetland wasn't there, you know, these, the species I've seen out there, when the wet, if the wetland wasn't there, those animals would still be out there.
Okay.
They do have, you know, they do have the stream, they do have the pond, and there are water opportunities for them to get water, et cetera. Um, but in terms of wetland-dependent species, whether it's wild fa, uh, waterfowl, whether it's amphibians and repti, certain reptiles, et cetera, this is not providing that kind of habitat.
Okay. Do we see that in the pond area or the stream?
More so in the pond area, certainly.
Okay. So that's check one. What would be the second thing you would try to?
Uh, groundwater recharge possibly.
Okay, so we have that there.
Discharge or recharge, depending on what your situation is.
So do we have that?
We don't have groundwater recharge. Uh, this is not an area with an underlying with an aquifer. This is not permeable soils generally in that area, which is why it holds water when it gets wet. Groundwater recharge would imply that there's, at least seasonally, there's some aspect of that water that goes down into the ground to recharge groundwater.
Okay.
Um, groundwater discharge, we do have that on the slope coming down the hill as part of that stream, uh, course and stream, uh, system. We don't have that, um, in those other two small pocket wetlands.
So outside the, the stream and the pond, we don't, we don't have animals, which is one. We don't have recharge, which is two. We have discharge in one.
Groundwater discharge, which is not, yeah, which is not unusual.
All right. And what other things do you look for?
Um, let me go through my list, uh-
Plants?
Vegetative diversity certainly is another one. I can't, I'm, I'm going through the McGee-Hollins method in my mind right now, and I'm trying to think of what the list is. Provision of detritus, which is another one. That means when trees lose their leaves and, and twigs, et cetera, that gets into the water course. Eventually it breaks down as compost and feeds the system further downstream, like provides nutrients to a pond downstream, animals that may live in that pond, et cetera. So that's, that's another, and, and sure, that would, you could say that that, this provides some of that. But again, since those two smaller pockets don't actually overflow into downstream areas, and I see we're looking at our watch, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna belabor any of this wetlands stuff, because you know, again, I can go on for many hours.
In terms of vegetation?
Yes.
When you went out there and did your assessment?
Yes.
Do you see wetlands vegetation?
Yes, wetlands vegetation, or transitional wetlands vegetation, vegetation that could either be what we call facultative, can either be in a wetland or not in a wetland. The wetland vegetation out here is sparse. It's, um, generally some herbaceous species that are relatively common in wetter areas and wetlands. Uh, there's some, but again, it's not a well-developed community. We don't have a, um, a dense herbaceous layer with shrub, with a shrub layer above it and a tree canopy above that, um, in term, in, in, in the terms of a wooded swamp kind of situation. It's not really a, a well-developed scrub shrub wetland, which is another kind of wetland where it's generally wetter. It has tussock sedge and other kinds of ferns growing in there, and, and a shrub layer, a taller shrub layer. We don't have that out there. These wetlands are very small. Also, don't forget, the, one is two thousand square feet. We expanded the other one to a little over five thousand square feet based on Johanna's, um, site walk with me. They're very small areas.
So going back to the vegetation, are there invasives out there, or are they native to the area?
Again, uh, there are some invasives. There's phragmities. You knew I was gonna say that. There's phragmities out there, um, in some spots. There are some, um, uh, microstegium, which is, um, stilt grass, which is another non-native species that's growing in and around those two smaller wetlands. There's some wetland species, mostly grassy wetland species, and nothing of real significance. It's not a, again, it's not a dense, well, well-developed wetland community.
Okay. And what about soils?
Soils? Well, by my estimation, I mean, it's only the first few inches of those, of that, of the soils in that, in those two ponded areas. Well, in the pond, the pond is submerged, uh, that's, that's essentially a ponded area really, and I flagged right around the ponded area. There's some, um, organic debris, um, some organic soils in the top layer of that, at the bottom of that pond. Underneath that, again, it's subsoils, it's, um, what were formerly, um, upland soils that have been scraped and, and dug and excavated. So it's more of what we call an eudorthing, which is a disturbed soil layer that, that, um-
So it's not a wetland soil?
I didn't find them to be wetland soils, no.
So if, if I'm to understand from a non-professional standpoint, animals, no. Recharge, no. Discharge, yes. Vegetation, yes, with some invasives. Sounds like the soils are no. And we have three areas that are wet. Two of them are not quality, one of them is. So that area there, that is now mitigation.
Right.
Is, is that the required square footage for the three combined?
Yes.
All right. So we've got, we're, we've added the area for two-
Low function-
Not great.
What I, what I would consider to be low-functioning lands.
All right. So we've taken areas where there were disturbances or something through the years, which don't necessarily meet all the tick points for the vegetation, and now we're, are we creating a quality wetland there?
In my estimation, we are, and, and Barton and La Judas will have to review my plan and, and see what conclusion they come to. Certainly what I'm, what I'm trying to do with this mitigation plan, and I've done, I've done probably a hundred mitigation plans in my career. I've built probably between forty and fifty wetlands on different sites throughout the seven counties we work in. So I'm familiar with the process, I'm familiar with what you need to do to get this to work.
We know you are.
What we're doing here is we're adding a significant number of trees and shrubs, native trees and shrubs, that are wetland-dependent or transitional, like right on the edge of a wetland, in order to create what we think will be a viable wetland community.
Okay.
Um, as well as the, the ground cover layer, herbaceous plants and seeding the area as well after the grading is completed in order to really get a multifaceted, multi-structured, multi-tiered, um, true wetland community. Yeah.
All right. So we, we keep talking about these three wetlands. Wetland one or two are not so great, wetland three is.
It's greater. It's still not great, to be honest. It's still not great, but-
But we're looking at-
Because it feeds directly into the pond, it's the one we give the most credence to, the one we, we're most concerned about.
We're looking at that one a little bit differently than we do the other two. The two that are not high-functioning, are not quality. What are the square footage of the total of those two?
Total is a little over seven thousand square feet.
So the two lower quality are seven thousand square foot. And the high, the one that's a little bit better, how many square foot is that?
It's about ten thousand square feet before you get to the pond. Not including the pond, it's about ten thousand square feet.
All right. So we have seventeen thousand square feet worth of wetland on the property. Two not so high-functioning, one in between. That takes care of the seventeen thousand square feet.
Well, no, because we're not impacting the, the, what we're, what we're calling wetland number three, which is the stream corridor, there are some minor encroachments into that, but it's not, we're not impacting that whole thing. In fact, the stream will continue to flow from Glen Rock, the culvert that enters the site under Glen Rock will continue to flow a little bit to the north and then breaks a hard right to go east and down the, down the hill through an existing channel-
Okay.
And into, it'll be under a new culvert when the new access road goes in. It'll be under a new culvert just a little bit west of where the old culvert is. Um, but will continue in that stream channel down to the pond.
So-
So that we're not disturbing. Well-
All right. So we have seventeen-
We're not, well, that's, and that's what this is. This is part of-
The stream channel, are you enhancing that?
We're enha, well, this is, a significant part of this has the stream channel running right through it. We are borrowing some hydrology from that stream channel as it comes down. Further up, we, we didn't have, I didn't have any proposal at this time to, we could certainly look at that.
So-
It's relatively close to two units on either side, so there's not a whole lot we can do there, but-
I'm gonna come to, back to that.
So of the seventeen thousand square feet, how many?
We're disturbing, we're disturbing about nine thousand.
So nine thousand?
Yeah. As of now, again, we're tweaking the plans, we're, you know, we're still playing with the grading to try to get numbers as low as we can.
So we got, we got eight thousand undisturbed.
Mm-hmm.
And is that the area this is?
That adds about fourteen thousand.
So this adds-
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen, to that eight.
To that eight.
Okay. And this was all brought to the conservation board?
We haven't been back to the conservation board in a while, but, I mean, they understand the concept and they, we did, we did discuss it when we were on the site.
Does this comply with the town's mitigation requirement?
It does, in my, in my estimation, it does, yeah.
I wanna jump in with you.
Go ahead.
So you know that the town's wetlands law has two components to it, that they seek to protect or regulate. One is the wetlands themselves, and the other component are a hundred-foot buffer that surrounds everything. And a significant part of this project is within that hundred-foot buffer. So are your plans going to show what steps you're going to take to protect the areas that remain open and wet, drainage channels and so forth? You just said a moment ago that two of your buildings are real close.
To the water courses as it comes down the hill, yes.
Yes, and I asked you whether you're gonna be enhancing that water course to, or to improve it, you know, and maybe slowing it down. I'm not sure what opportunities exist, but I think it's of concern to me that our discussion right now is all focusing on the wetlands themselves and nothing on the one hundred, the loss of the buffer area that was also, um, a protected area, not to the same extent, but it is called for to be considered in our code, and I haven't seen much reference to what the impacts of that are.
Well, generally, and, and I've run into this a number of times over the years, I mean, the concern really is that the one hundred-foot buffer only relates to the resource itself. The two, two smaller wetlands, B and C, would, in, in most situations have a one hundred-foot buffer. But when you get to the point where you're filling in those two wetlands, there, there's nothing to buffer, so that part of the buffer-
I, I understand that, but what-
Comes move. And, and this wetland here will have, and, and we can quantify that, we haven't quantified it yet. Joe and I are still working out the final grades and design for this area, but we can, we, we'll be able to show, I mean, just to the south of this wetland area, the mitigation area, is Joe's pocket wetland that he's building for, um, stormwater treatment. And that's also gonna become part of this, and that will serve as a significant buffer to the wetland on that side, to the new wetland on that side. So we will take, I can certainly say that we'll take a closer look at what's going on from this point west up to Glen Rock and over in terms of what we can do to stabilize that channel.
Yeah.
Check dams, et cetera, that kind of thing. Vegetate, just move over here. Curse the Italian. Um, the, um, you know, and we'll see what else, other vegetative, vegetative measures we can use to, to buffer and to stabilize that channel.
Well, with respect to that channel, cause one of my questions, which we'll look at whenever we get these plans, is the watershed that's going into that stream channel, cause obviously there's going to be, well, I'm guessing that the development is within that watershed, so there's new uses that are then going to be runoff into that. Is there any mitigation measure, measures that are gonna be required? And again, I haven't seen your grading plan, so maybe that-
And I think you have, you have to see it, I'm sorry, but you have to see it in the larger context of the whole site plan. This kind of limits to what, limits you to what you're seeing. It's only a couple hundred feet from this point to the west where we're at the road.
Yeah, I know, yeah, exactly. I know where we are, yeah.
So the watershed itself is really everything that's, from Glen, Glen Rock Road provides most of the hydrology, most of the runoff to the site. It's an uncurbed, this is gonna be curbed and, and captured now, right, Joe?
Correct.
So there'll be mitigation in terms of, just in terms of stormwater treatment compared to the existing condition, as to what it's gonna look like after. And we will have significantly more discussion about that in, in our documentation. Yes, but certainly, what the effects on, on the whole watershed through the wetland will be considered.
Steve, that, that water course that we're talking about right now, that's essentially moving water from Glen Rock down to the pond.
Yes. That's what it does.
So it really is acting as almost like a drainage swell, and yet it's got characteristics of a wetland?
Well, we call, I mean, in most, in most regulations, wetlands and water courses are kinda handled as the same thing. It's kind of the same, it's part of the same puzzle. So, yeah, we, I mean, we flagged, I flagged very, very narrowly on either side of that just to get a feel for how wide that channel is as you go up the hill. Um, in some, in some instances, like with the Army Corps, generally you just, if it's a water course, you, you, excuse me, hangs, flags down the center line of the stream and say, you know, center line of a five-foot wide water course. But because we're doing, because we're relatively close with some of the development, and because we wanna use this as part of our mitigation, we did flag on both sides of it just to really get a feel for the geometry of it and the size of it. But, yeah, essentially, again, it's carrying water from Glen Rock to the pond.
And you wanna do that efficiently. You don't wanna, you're not looking to slow that process.
Well, you, you wanna slow it a little bit, because I think what'll hap, what's happening now is that we have erosion that is creating some issues with that channel as it comes down the hill. So, but I think stabilizing the, the banks of that stream and, as well as providing some measures for slowing down the water as it comes down the hill will be valuable.
That, yet, you have yet to submit?
Yes, yes.
So it sounds like there's still more work to be done on all of it.
There's a little bit of, yeah, and then we'll, we'll, we'll be preparing a package very, in the very near future that'll cover all these bases.
Does the, does the town-
And, and B and L will see it.
Does the town code require or suggest a two to one mitigation?
One to one.
One. One to one?
One to one.
And so you're-
Yeah, but this is, this is, this is speaking to me in a certain way. It's saying, this is how big I wanna be, and this is where my water is coming from, and this is how I, I, so, for what that's worth, that's, that's why, how I came up with this plan.
So the intention of your planning, planting plan is to create wetlands or the potential for wetlands?
Well, yes, exactly.
Twice as much as what's currently there?
Twice as much, yes, it's going to be impacted.
Higher, more higher function.
And, and again, it's all native species, um, and, you know, which, which is a significant difference from what's out there now.
All right. So we have some more work to do on the wetlands?
Mike?
Oh. Sorry, Oz. So we have more work to do on the wetlands, and I know you wanted to talk about trees.
Yep.
So what do we have on that?
Trees. So that's the comp, the compiled one, Joe. I have my cheat sheets here with me. So what we did as part of the, so what we did as part of the tree code, I've also updated the section in the EAF, um, as it relates to trees and the tree code. Um, so what I've done is provided a series of, of, um, maps, plans that show trees coming out of the site. We went back, I went back in for two reasons. First, to verify the species of trees on the site, cause if you're familiar with the tree code, it does refer to what we call protected trees under the code, and then there are essentially unprotected trees, which are less desirable trees, which the code specifically calls out as being non-native invasive trees that should be eliminated from the site if possible. And the code references a certain resource for finding out, getting the list of what those trees should be. And specifically on this site, we have black locust and Norway maple. Now, the cert, the, the original tree survey that I was given, and the numbers that we based our original submissions on, only showed maple. Well, it turns out there are four different species of maple on this site, including Japanese maple and the Norway maple, which are non-natives, as well as sugar maple and red maple. So I went out and tasked myself with going back out and identifying all of the trees that are on the survey that are actually Norway maples and should come out, as opposed to the, you know, the native red maple and, and sugar maple. Going through that exercise, I came up with a total of 92, either black locust or Norway maple on the site. So out of the 714 trees in the original survey, 603 of those trees are what we would consider to be protected trees under the, under the code.
So can you just say those numbers again?
714 total trees, 603 protected trees.
Six oh three.
Yeah. Now, of the protected trees we found, we, originally, if you probably remember, the first numbers we were talking about were 523 trees were coming out. We have that down to 402 trees now. Joe and I have gone through the grading plan, and I think based on what he said tonight, in terms of moving the apartment building over, we might have, actually be able to save a few more trees as well.
So if I could.
We're down to 402 trees being cut at this time, and so therefore, 201 of the existing trees on the site will be preserved. So Joe, if you could go to the next one, next page.
How many of those 402 protected trees, or 402 trees to be removed are protected?
For all of them.
All of them.
Yeah. Yeah, because once we, once we determine which of the species on, on the site were unprotected trees, that brought all our numbers down.
Thank you.
So this plan here, this shows here is the, all those green dots are existing trees that will remain after, after construction. We particularly paid attention to the under-hill, and Joe, if you could blow up under-hill and, and the intersection with Route 118 there.
So the green is existing trees today.
That will stay.
That are proposed to remain.
That were proposed to remain, that are outside of limits of disturbance, or with a little bit of careful grading around, can be preserved. So you can see on, on the 118 side, we were able to find a number of trees, some of which admittedly are Norway maples. But in that situation, because of the proximity to the road and screening and, and just vegetation on that, on that frontage, we're, we're looking at keeping. So there's 19 trees that are considered not protected trees that we are keeping, just for that reason. Same thing on Glen Rock, we did the same thing. I went up to Glen Rock and found a number of trees that didn't have to be cut down that happened to be Norway maples, and, and the determination is that, just again, for aesthetics and for screening, it's better to keep them rather than. And that was one of the comments I had actually seen in one of the emails, is that, you know, it's better to keep some trees even if they're bad trees because of what else they do. And, and so we looked at that and followed up with that.
If I could ask you a quick question?
You bet.
Because we're going to be dealing with the historic end of this at some point, too. This was a farm. The age of these trees out there, if you could.
Yeah, I mean, well, you could slide it down, Joe, to show the hill, the slope. You know, based on our, and as you're all familiar, I love the aerial photo analysis. Based on that aerial, based on that aerial photo analysis, everything essentially from the culvert that carries the stream underneath the emergency accessway north was not vegetated as of, at, at the early 70s. Was basically pasture, or it was open field that had been maintained for whatever agricultural reason. There weren't any trees out there. So all the trees that are in that hillside, and it's a great number, I think I counted 192, out of all the trees on the site, and most of these particular trees are in that area, there were 192, 192 either aspens or cottonwoods, which are very fast-growing kind of garbage trees, in my opinion, but, you know, they're, they're still trees, and they're native species. But they're grow, they're the trees that are growing in that area. They grow very quickly, they grow very tall very quickly, but 30 to 40 years, I would say.
So you think most of this site has been vegetated from 1970 on?
Yes, yes. Yep, the trees on the site.
Right, no, it's all, because.
As you get closer to the house, and as you get closer to the outbuildings, then there are larger, you know, more mature trees of more desirable species. Although there's a lot of, between the new condo building and the lake, there are some 35, 36, 40-inch Norway maples. Now, again, Norway maple is considered to be a, a pest tree, an invasive species, but there are some large ones, because they've been there a long time, probably 100-year-old trees.
Would you call any of the trees on site historic?
That's, I, I don't know, I don't know what the definition of an historic tree is, you know, I don't.
Back to the time when this house was built?
Oh, there, there are probably a few that are close to that age, if not that age.
Okay.
There's some large walnuts on the site, there's a couple of very big Norway spruces on the site, there's some oaks, a lot, a lot more than I expected to find of Norway maples right around the house. Again, between 30 and 40 inches in diameter, big trees, but not considered to be desirable trees anymore. You know, how things change, there used to be good trees, and now they're bad trees. And they're bad trees, I just want to point out, one of the reasons that Norway maples are considered to be bad trees is that there's a chemical in the root systems that prevents other trees and other species from growing around them. So they have, basically, once a stand of Norway maple starts, nothing else can grow. You'll even see on this site, when you see the Norway maples, in the direct area around them, nothing else is really growing, nothing, no other trees. You don't see a Norway maple in a big crowd of trees in a woodland, because it's got that, that little pathogen that it's got going. So, so those are, so that's, so that's the map of, of the trees that are existing on the site that will remain. Next page? This is the tree plan from the landscape plan, which we do have, the landscape plan we can bring up in a minute also. So this shows a little bit lighter, maybe a little harder to see on the screen, of new trees that are being planted on the site. So we're removing 400 trees, we're replanting, at this time, the landscape plan shows 336 trees, and my mitigation plan shows an additional 13 trees, so 349 trees, 349 new trees being added to the site, as well as a, a large number of shrubs and smaller, and smaller plantings. So we're not quite at one-to-one in terms of number of trees to trees we're cutting, and, you know, we've looked through the codes on, obviously, in, in close, in, in much detail, and there is a provision for paying for additional trees into the tree fund, the town's tree fund, to, to fund plantings on other town properties that might be appropriate. So we'll have, once the site plan is fixed and we have a, a definite number of trees we're planting, then we will look at, with the planning board, we'll look at, at what kind of numbers would be appropriate for us to replace at the, at the $100 a tree that the, that the code specifies.
Can I get one bit of clarification? Sorry, when you keep saying, is it 406 you're removing?
403.
403.
Something like that.
Is that not counting the Norway maples you're removing? Like, is.
That does not count the Norway maple.
Right, so how many are of the, I know that they're invasive and all that, how many are the undesirables?
I think there are 72, there's 92 undesirable trees. Between black locust and Norway maples, there are 92.
Okay.
To be removed.
To be removed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you had those numbers, because people are still going to see trees being removed, so I just want to make sure.
That's why I have.
Yeah, we're, we're close to 500 trees being removed, and I understand, again, Norway maples, we don't want them, but I just want to make sure we all are on the same page on that.
Yeah, I mean, the code specifically says that if, you know, if you, one of the, one of the means for mitigating trees that are coming out is to cut out invasive trees. So we are doing that.
And they're not protected.
They're not protected. So go, one more, Joe, this is, this is our composite plan. That shows trees that are staying, trees, new trees that are being planted, and then it also has the X's on it for the trees that are coming out. So this, just to kind of give everybody context on the, on the overall. And then the last, the last sheet is the new, newly updated spreadsheet that shows trees that are coming out and trees that are staying. And again, as you go through that spreadsheet, you'll see that the large majority of trees that are coming out are the aspens and cottonwoods. Probably half to, close to half the trees that are, half the protected trees that are coming out are, are aspens or cottonwoods.
And if anybody wants a copy of this sheet, we could spread it around.
Put on your magnifiers.
By 11.
Do you have any mapping that shows the wetlands and the trees together?
I don't think so.
Did you do any of those?
Rich, what do you mean, in terms of, like what, in what sense? That's something we can certainly put together quickly, it's just, I'm not sure what you.
What's that?
The mitigation?
So you.
Where you got the wetland areas and trees that are in that area.
Trees that are in the, like the wetland in the buffer?
What's that?
The trees that are in the wetlands in the buffer, you mean, or?
In the wetlands in particular.
Well, again, those two, those two smaller wetlands don't have any trees in them.
There's nothing.
Nothing. There's one, the, the one wetland, Wetland C, the one that we expanded a little bit, has, at one edge, has an existing hemlock tree, I think it is, or, or, I don't know if it's a white pine or a hemlock. And then there's a red maple at the other end of it, but that, there are no trees in these wetlands, other than that, that stream corridor that's coming down the hill.
Are there no trees in the wetlands because it was disturbed when they did this fire road?
That's what we, that's what I expect. And nothing was able to get back in there, either because it was too wet or because the soils were not really conducive to trees growing.
So this, this, the existing condition plan shows, those black dots are the trees that were located. So you can see within this wetland, there's, there's one.
Yeah.
Here.
You usually do an assessment where you take the maps from Westchester County and kind of show how the sites progressed over time.
And that, that's actually in, that's in the EAF, there is a, in the wetland section of the EAF, there's a progression of aerial photos that show from 1947 to the present.
You, you, do you have that today or no?
I don't think, do we have that, Joe? Is that on there?
I just have to find it. Give me a date.
I don't have any. You know what, Joe, if you go back to my, my thumb drive, I think there's a, I think I have the file in there, the wetland report. Does it say Section 3 Wetlands 412? That, that's probably it.
Report photos?
No, the, the, the second from the bottom. Open that up, we'll see if, I don't remember if that's just, I don't know if, if that's just the text or if it's the, the plant, the photos.
Just text.
Oh, okay. No, then I don't have it, Rich, sorry.
All right, no problem. Yeah, yeah, I'll look. I think we do have it.
That's where we are today with the trees.
So we wanted to cover just two additional items, and I'm going to cover both of them, and I can be very brief, now that the evening is getting long. The first item has to deal with the concept of the recreational fee as it applies to our project, right? There has been sort of dueling narratives, there's been, I think, a, a piece of confusion where it has been, position has been taken that we automatically have triggered the recreational fee, and a recreational fee is required under, under our project. I'm just reading from your code, the town of Yorktown Town Code. The, the, the triggering, the recreational fee is triggered if the provision, so i- if we are unable, if the provision of such facilities, the, the section above this goes through what, what the requirements are.
What section are you?
Uh, this is the R3, the subsection 3, or the, or the, it's a long citation. I was hoping not to have to read it.
Is there a number there?
Yes, 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 I have it. So we're in Section 300-21, Sub-C, 3, small a, 2F, and 2G. And these are the requirements under the R3 multi-family residential district. Now, under this, under the requirements that are applying to our project, the recreational fee is triggered if we are unable to meet the requirements. We are going to show in the EAF and on our site plan, like, for example, 400 square feet per unit for play and other outdoor living uses. That's just one requirement in the code. We are, our site plan will show, and our EAF section will, will demonstrate, that we don't actually trigger the recreational fee requirement. If you fail, if you fail to comply with the requirements of the code, then it's $4,000 per dwelling unit in a multifamily project like ours. So that's a large number, it'd been floated over $500,000 that we were required to pay in, as a recreational fee, that we have triggered that recreational fee.
Are you saying you heard that from this board?
No, no, I'm not, sir, I'm not, I'm not, during, we, we are bringing up, during the course of this review, we have been sensitive to touch on public comments and other comments and other, even, even other, let me put it this way, we have gotten comments from state agencies, from your local boards, from sister boards that you have, and from members of the public. So there has been this narrative that has surfaced that we have triggered that fee, and our position, we, I'm just here to tell you tonight, we've done an extensive review, and we'll show, we'll demonstrate through the memoranda and also on the site plan, that we actually, we do comply with our set-asides, with the playground, with everything that the code asks us to, or requires us to do, we, we actually comply with it. So that's the first point. The second point has to do with what's come up with the affordable housing, right, the affordable housing statute. And in, in particular, the memorandum submitted by Ken Bell for the Chair of the Community Housing Board, dated March 27 of 2023. The interesting thing about the Yorktown Code as it relates to affordable housing is that it states, right, in its, in its effect, purpose, and intent, the purpose and intent of this section to provide guidelines and regulations for existing affordable housing. So Yorktown, like other communities in Westchester, does not actually have a set-aside requirement for us, right? We are not subject to some, normally you'll see maybe a 5% or 10% set-aside. That is not existing in the code today. So in terms of the affordable housing, from a strict code compliance, we, we do comply with the code. Well, we're not required to provide any, we're not providing any, so that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to be sort of cute there, I mean, we, we are not under an obligation to do a set-aside, and we are not planning on that set-aside. Now, something was raised, Mr. Bach, you raised a question last time, or maybe another meeting ago, that under the secret analysis, right, we're doing a fiscal analysis, there's also a community character analysis, under the secret analysis, we, we will show that in our study of the community character, in our study of our fiscal impact of our project, in, in our, the secret materials, we will satisfy that review, that requirement for the review. There's not a specific, you know, we, we, because we're not required to set aside the affordable housing, we're, we're not, we're not deficient in the secret analysis if we don't do a community-wide study of affordable housing. For example, there are communities where you don't, you, you would, a code would require a set-aside for affordable housing, or in the alternative, they would provide a payment in lieu of affordable housing, right? Under that scenario, if we were not, if we were doing a payment in lieu of it rather than a set-aside, then secret would be triggered, it's much more in-depth analysis. But here, with, based on what we're required, we are doing, we, we are doing a fiscal impact study, we are doing the community, we are touching on the community character, we are touching on those things, and our, our secret review will, will satisfy, I'm sorry, our materials will satisfy the secret review as it relates to the affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on, on recreation, going back to recreation.
Joe.
Mike.
Mike.
I'm sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to get a clear understanding. What you're saying is, on your site, you're going to show that you meet the requirement for recreation, which deletes the need for this board to ask for a fee in lieu of that recreation.
That's correct. I look at it slightly differently, it's like a triggering mechanism.
Right, but what I'm, what the point I'm trying to get at, it's not, it's, it removes the option of this board to ask for a fee at that point. If you can demonstrate that you've met the requirement, we don't have a choice to ask for a fee at all.
That's correct. It doesn't, right, you would not have jurisdiction over that, that issue. That's correct, yes.
I was just trying to.
No, thank you for the clarification, yes. I, I mean, I think, so, I believe we have all concluded, unless there's.
Well, just one other thing, can we go back to the Ibaka comment? Because we have to go back to them about relocating two units to the head of the sub, of the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, yeah.
Can we get some input on how you're feeling on that? Is that something we should?
You could put that up again?
They wanted them to shorten the length of the cul-de-sac and take two of the units and put it at the end.
Would those units sit on top of the water course?
No.
No, no. It, it's the last two in building, uh.
It would be these two here.
Right there.
These two would come out.
Right near, they're at the far end, on the Beaver Ridge side.
So we could shorten the road and, you know, move up the cul-de-sac.
And then, and then the cul-de-sac serves a purpose, in, in the sense that.
Yeah.
That square, that square is two, is two units?
Yeah, these two units right here.
And you're bringing them forward?
They're moving them out.
The cul-de-sac's coming forward.
We're removing, we would be removing these two end units here.
But they still will exist?
Yeah, right, we would just move them to here.
Can you zoom out, Joe?
Sounds that good to me. I mean, come on, you got two units, you, yeah, that's your money for units, and units.
No, I think it makes the cul-de-sac.
No, go down.
Purposeful at that point. I mean, is there like a reason for it to be there, it serves a.
So those two units there that are across from the condo unit?
These two.
Maybe, yeah, maybe consideration of those, because I think that may preserve some of that area around the pond that contributes to the existing landscape.
So, so John, you're suggesting move these also up there?
Yes, as a, as a possibility.
Good idea.
I mean, it is.
Even better idea.
I like that.
You think we can get four across, Joe?
We, we might be able to get two this way, and then two this way.
I like that even better.
Guess we'll look at it.
That would have, John, that would have a net effect, that would have a net effect of increasing the public space effectively as well, right around the pond.
It would increase the public space, and I think it, like I said, I think it frees up the area in terms of its setting. I also think that, just in terms of organization, I think that, those types of units are better along that road, and those two units that are set across from the condo seem a little bit misplaced to me. I just think it's a better, a better choice, if, if you can do it practically. Do you have any other questions for us? Issues that you want to discuss?
Nope, I think I'm happy we got the information on the traffic, I think that's very helpful. Obviously, we need more work on the wetland side. I think probably at the next meeting, we'll talk about the historic report.
Yes.
Where I'm sure everybody else had a chance to review it. I'm sure we'll have our historic people here, which will be helpful.
Right.
And, you know, if you guys have your person at that time, too, just like we did with